Half minutes early, but we'll get started. Tonight is a special meeting for the zoning commission for the town of Simmsbury. Looking at a couple of items tonight. We don't have minutes to review from last week yet, so we'll do that at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is not scheduled till the middle of September, which is why we're having a special meeting tonight. All right. Appointment of alternates. Jackie, you can sit in for Derek. Okay? Otherwise, I think we are glad to have a strong forum here tonight. The first item is referral to the zoning and planning in accordance with Article 12, Section C dash dot one for a use variance for zoning board of appeals application number fifteen dash oh four of James W. Gallagher owner for a variance pursuant to Article seven, section one of the Simmsbury zoning regulations to allow for automotive use in an I-1 zone on the property located at eight Herman Drive, Susser's Map one oh two, I-oh-two, block four thirty-nine, lot twelve, zone I-1. This is somewhat complicated issue relative to what's before us, so I'd ask Hiram to maybe just summarize sort of the issues before us and what action are we going to consider tonight.
Mr. Chairman, this is the, I think this is the first one that, like this, that we've seen since I've been here anyway. The regulations do require that for use variances, the zoning board of appeals refers that application to the zoning commission and the planning commission for recommendation back to them prior to them making a decision. I think, as you may have noted in the email that I sent out, it's an unusual situation. Use variances are, in some cases, heavily restricted by some towns. That's not the case here necessarily. But what it does require is because it is unusual is the referral to the zoning commission and the planning commission prior to going back to ZBA. Just to make a note too, that I have sent you out a report from Rachel that she did for the ZBA, I believe was given to the ZBA the last time they met, prior to their meeting. I want to also just make note too, that I sent out a copy of Planning and Zoning Comments, the fourth edition, from Thomas Byrne. There's a small paragraph in there on use variances. There's also note article with regard to zoning boards of appeals and what they look at when they look at variances, use variances, there's also a distinction between a special permit and a variance. As you know, this board has the authority to issue special permits, does not have the authority to issue variances, so that's the reason that it's here this evening. And then the last thing that you got, I just got today actually, was a copy of, from Westlaw, from the town attorney, that also talks about use variances. So fairly, you know, different topic than we often talk about, but that particular article is not really long, even though the article itself is fourteen pages, the section that applies to use variances is not all that long, but it does have some interesting information there for you to take a look at. So with that, I would simply turn it over to the applicant and...
Yeah, I just wanted to make one point clear, because it was almost clear to me, but I wanted to clarify that there is not a provision by which you can get a special permit for this use in an I-1 zone, or that would have been a much easier path for Mr. Gallagher to take.
Correct.
So this is the path available to him, and so we will consider their input.
All right.
Understood?
Yep.
What was the action taken in oh five?
So, yeah, just attorney Donahue may refer to that, but that was a special exemption, a special permit issued in two thousand six, although for that use at that location.
Why is that not done?
In apparent contravention or contradiction of what was actually possible to do.
In the zoning regs at the time.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thanks for your consideration of this item. This item was on the agenda the last ZBA meeting and was properly continued under your zoning regulations for reference to the planning commission and the zoning commission, and we're here tonight. Ultimately, what we'd like from you this evening is your consideration, which we always get, but we would like a finding that the use is requested in variance is in keeping with other surrounding uses, not likely to cause or have adverse effects on the neighbors, and that you do not object to the consideration or granting of the variance. We're not asking, as you said, there's nothing that you can give us except a reference to them, and what they want, and the reason why this is in your regulations is, if there was a significant reason to object to it, they'd like to know that from the zoning commission. I don't know if you're familiar with the Herman Drive development, but it's a very industrial development, it's an I-1 development, and as you say, our zoning regulation allows automotive use as a special permit in an I-2, but not in an I-1. This automotive use is not a broad automotive use, you know, if you review land regulations, the automotive use restrictions really were focused on car dealerships and gas stations. And the use that we're talking about here is really servicing diesel motors, so I-1 would allow you to work there and create engines, it would allow you to turn wrenches, it would allow you to do all the functions that you do, but it does not, the zoning regulations do not enable the automotive use in the I-1 zone, and that's why we're here. There's history on this, in two thousand five or six, there was a special permit granted to allow Laurel Automotive that is in there, and they're in, you know, the problem is that the town line runs right through the middle, I'd like to pass this down, right through the middle on a diagonal basis of the building, and it creates confusion. The East Granby part is permitted. Simmsbury has granted a special permit by the zoning commission, although there's a problem with that because it doesn't comply with the zoning regulation, and that's why we're at the ZBA. I would like you to know at the ZBA, Mr. Gallagher's here, he's the owner of the property, we were at the ZBA, we put notice out to all the budding owners, we had a sign on the property, Jim's talked to several of the owners, nobody has any objection whatsoever to this use. And when we did have the public hearing called at the ZBA, there was no neighbors, no one is opposed to this, no one in the neighborhood is opposed to it. And if you go there, you'll see that it's a very, very industrial neighborhood where this use, you wouldn't notice it if it's there. Ms. Blatt, her staff had some questions about parking on the lot, and she did make recommendations to the ZBA that if it is granted, the lot should be better ordered and put in better shape, and Mr. Gallagher is very, very willing to do that. So again, we're not, what we're looking for is for you to give some kind of a reference, if you don't mind the ZBA taking this up, and if you don't mind the ZBA looking.
Questions for...
Quick question. So Laurel Automotive's already in there, based on the previous exception. Any problems with them? Is there any history there? Has it been all positive? It's similar type business that's going to be in there?
It's a great Simmsbury business, you know, they don't have enough service places to service the cars at Simmsbury, and I think John's doing very, very well. I talked to John when I was posting the sign that day, and he was, he's totally fine with this.
Okay.
Not familiar with Laurel Automotive. I think it's very well suited as a location for that kind of repair. I mean, it's clean, you roll the door up, they take care of the cars, they roll the door down. I think the issue that Rachel, you know, you don't want a lot of half repaired or about to be stripped down cars cluttering up, because then that becomes a different kind of business than when contemplated by a drive-in, fix-it, drive-out. You mentioned diesel specifically, what is the business that's going in there?
He repairs diesel engines, that's all he does, so his trucks, mostly trucks, he keeps some of them inside, he has no control of how many people come there, but he ever done, he's pretty good at it, because people come from all over.
And where's he moving from, Jim?
Excuse me?
Where's his business today?
Today?
Yeah.
In there. He went to get, he went to get a permit, because we talked on the two thousand six deal that covered the whole.
Okay. So it's a new business, or he's...
No, no, he's been there, but he couldn't find a place. Reason he picked mine was, I got a sixteen-foot door in there, so he can get the trucks, and not many people around have that. I didn't do that because I wanted the diesel guy in there, just was, you know...
Every once in a while you have a good idea.
He's a genius. But he's very, kid, I'll tell you what, he works a lot of hours, a lot of hours, he's all by himself.
So this is not an area where there is any kind of neighborhood or other commercial business that would be negatively impacted, in my view. David, do you have thoughts on this?
Dangerous to work by yourself.
Anywhere, anyhow.
In a place like that with stuff that's heavy. No, I think, you know, I...
So what business is in there now that has the cars in the back of the building?
Patrick.
Actually, the letter that you see there is going to help me out, because I try to get all that crap out of there, but one leaves, two come in, and I got one there who's jacked up, and I've been at this guy forever to get that crap out of there. Actually, one of them is my truck, so I can't holler at myself, but I got plates on it since Christmas. That's what happened, he's got, sometimes he's got six employees, sometimes he's got two.
It's Laurel Automotive?
No, he's talking about, he's...
The guy in the back? Back there, there's...
The guy in the back is being like Cat, he does fancy, you know, little tinkles. He worked, his father owns Fona over at the airport, so he does, you know, little things that cost a lot of money, and he plug it into something, but...
Well, so the real direct question though is, who's going to be responsible for making sure that excess automobiles are armed?
I already, I've already sent a letter to all tenants to get this stuff out.
All right, so I guess I'll make a motion that the zoning commission refer, recommends probably the wrong word, but refer to the ZBA that we have no issues with this business in this location. Full stop.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right? Get the cars cleaned up.
Thank you very much. Thank you, good stew.
Okay, next agenda item is application fifteen dash twenty-two of Ronald Benjamin. Huh?
Good enough.
Not quite right. From Fussin' O'Neil, agent for Westminster School, owner for site amendment, site plan amendment for new student and faculty residence, dining hall and renovations to Cushing Hall on the property located at nine nine five Hot Meadow Street, Susser's Map, H zero seven, block one oh three, lot thirty-four, zoned R forty. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ron Bonja, professional engineer for Fussin' O'Neil. On behalf of Westminster School and Grand Partnership, I just want to thank you for scheduling a special meeting for us. Westminster School is under a tight time constraint, and they needed permits hopefully before the end of August, so this really worked out for us, and hopefully you like the application, you choose to attend tonight. Like I said, on behalf of Westminster, I'm here to present this application along with Dan Rutledge from Gunn Partnership, the architects for the project, and Carol Kirsch from Westminster School.
Thank you.
As you know, the campus is right down the street here at nine ninety-five Hot Meadow Street. A little brief history, it was founded in eighteen eighty-eight, moved since right in nineteen hundred. Currently, there's three hundred and ninety-three students, ninety-two faculty. Of those three hundred and ninety-three students, seventy percent of them are board of students, they live on campus, thirty percent are day students who dropped off for school. We've presented this application to Inland Wetlands last week, we received approval for these soil erosion control plans. We also presented to the designer and board earlier tonight, and they gave a favorable recommendation as well. This is a artistic rendering of the entire campus. Campus, it's just under two hundred acres total. It's set about ninety feet elevation higher than Hot Meadow Street, this is Hot Meadow Street down here. To the north of it is the campus, you've got the athletic fields here in the back, soccer fields, tennis courts over in this area. The Armour Academic Building, which was recently constructed, I believe it was two thousand eight or so, right here. Previous application that you seen was dormitory projects that were recently completed the last couple of years. There's one dorm here, another dorm over here, and then several buildings as part of that application were raised and removed, and a lot of the, well, there's a new campus road that comes through the campus there. This is just an aerial of what the site looks like today. You've got the new dorm that was recently completed here, another recently completed dorm here, campus road here. This is Cushing Hall here, Armour Academic Building here, and then the campus chapel is here. Reason why we're here tonight is to present this application for new student, faculty, residence carriage house, also a dining hall, and the Cushing Hall building renovations. Now, the student residents, faculty student residents, is the same exact building that was presented to you in the past couple of years, they're using the same architectural plans, same materials, everything. It's a nine thousand square foot building footprint. The carriage houses are the same that was presented to you in the past as well. There's two new carriage houses as part of this application, and those carriage houses include the five-car garage below on the first floor, and then a faculty residence directly above it. The dining hall is a twenty-two thousand square foot footprint building, it's not a twenty-two thousand square foot building. Footprint itself is only, is twenty-two thousand. There's partial floors, there's two other partial floors below the main finished floor of that dining hall, and Dan will go into the plans for that a little bit later tonight. Cushing Hall building renovations, portion of the existing dining hall on Westminster School will be demolished. To basically put the building shell back to the way it used to be, there was an addition put on after, some time ago, and that portion of the building addition is going to come down and make the building the way it used to be. And also included in that, in that site plan improvement is a pedestrian connection from the Cushing Hall to the Armour Academic Building. Each of those individual projects are outlined here, we've got the student faculty dorm going in this location, the Cushing Hall renovation is over in this area, and then the dining hall is going right here. This is the same location of the old Baxter Academic Building that was demolished once the new academic building was placed. This is the old two thousand twelve approved site plan. That two thousand twelve approved site plan included three dormitories, only two were constructed, so we have the three larger buildings here, those were proposed dorms. Smaller rectangles were either two-car garages, there's a carriage house here, and then I believe there was one single-car garage. This was all approved back in two thousand twelve. Of that, everything shaded in yellow was not constructed. So you have a dorm that wasn't constructed, three two-car garages, another two-car garage over here with a driveway, and then this carriage house. Those were all never constructed as part of that passed approval. This is a overall of what our project looks like today. We have the new dorm location here, and that passed approval, it was actually over here. Reason for moving it over here is to keep Milliken occupied when this is constructed. Milliken will stay once this is constructed. We have a new carriage house here. This carriage house that was approved previously will get constructed this time around. Dining hall is located here. We're going to reconfigure the oval area between Cushing Hall and the dining hall in front of the chapel. This will all get redone, they get more uniform than what it looks like today. And then you have the Cushing improvements in the back here, there's a pedestrian connection between Cushing and Armour. This work over here is a relocated playground. Westminster staff that live on campus, they have families, so there's a playground that's located right about here that will be relocated over to here. There's a lot of work associated with this, these site plan improvements, and we're planning to do it in phases. Phase one would be to relocate the playground, construct the student faculty residence for three, carriage house for that residence. Phase two would be the dining hall along with the carriage house that's directly behind the already constructed dormitory. And then phase three would be the Cushing Hall renovations, because we don't want to disturb that until we have a constructed dining hall. And then the pedestrian connections as well. So here you see the phases on a map. Phase one would be this work, phase two the dining hall, carriage house, phase three the Cushing work. This is an aerial of what phase one area would look like. Right now, there's an existing dormitory, Milliken, that will stay. There's a edge house, this is also a dormitory over here. There's a house located here with the garage, those will both be raised to make room for the playground. There's an existing parking lot for, that's currently used for the faculty that live in Milliken. That used to also be a parking lot for a dorm that used to be right here, I believe it was Andrews, that got demolished when this dormitory was constructed. These are more close-up picture of what the improvements will look like, so you have Milliken here, carriage house here, and then the dorm here. This whole area will be filled in, because right now it's about twelve to fifteen feet lower than the main campus loop up here. So that whole area is going to get filled in to bring that area up. We have a few parking spaces here, and there's a retaining wall located right here, so this whole area can be raised up without disturbing too much of Milliken. And then this area here is the proposed tree line for this filling. As you probably know, since the campus is ninety feet above Hot Meadows, there's a significant slope right now between the plateau area of Westminster campus and Hot Meadows, so there's a, this whole slope is, ranges from, you know, four, five to one to one and a half to one in certain, some locations. So the reason for the majority of this fill is not because of the depth of fill we're putting in, we're just, we're basically chasing slope. So the majority of this is really only a foot or two or three of fill material, it's just we can't tie in until we get down that far. This here is the existing aerial of where the dining hall will go. This is again where the Baxter building used to be. We've got the already constructed dormitory, Cushing Hall here, and the chapel there. This is an old aerial from two thousand eight, this is where, this is the old Baxter Academic Building, footprint of that, it's approximately twenty-one thousand square feet. The proposed dining hall footprint is about twenty-two thousand square feet, so roughly the same size footprint going in the same location. So the proposed improvements for the dining hall. Again, we got the reconfigured oval in the front, a nice brick connection between the dining hall and Cushing Hall. We're reconfiguring this driveway slightly to come in on the center of the chapel. This is an existing driveway here, we're going to destroy so much of it that we're just going to reconstruct it. This carriage house will be built. There's a short retaining wall here to support that parking area, some stairs, walkways coming down to this area here, as this slope right now is about a three to one slope. The building's going to be constructed into the side of that slope. Finished floor will be leveled, this oval area up here, and then the back portion will go down two more stories. This area in the back is the loading area that's going to be used, it's going to be accessed by the old main campus drive, prior to the campus drive that exists today. This was used to get all the way up to the top of the campus. Right now, there's, the only reason to use this is to get into that parking lot that's going to go away. So this driveway now will only be used by either faculty, or at least the people that work in the dining hall, which will be parked in here, or for loading. That driveway's going to get cut off right here, and all of this existing bituminus that is there today will go away. This loading area is unique in a way where the majority of it is underneath a roof. You might have dumpster, and all the loading activities will be, will have it underneath this cover area. If you took an aerial picture of this after it's constructed, all you'll see is brass over the top of that. There's a couple of retaining walls here and here to get into that side. We have a transformer generator located back here, those will all be screened by some shrubbery and some trees. Basically, the screening is going to be from people that are outside on this dining hall This is the existing aerial of Cushing Hall. This is Cushing Hall, the Armour Academic Building here, and then these are the current pedestrian paths for the students to take. And then again, the proposed work. Portion of the building in this corner here will be demolished, and then this pedestrian connection will be made. Right now, the main loading area for Cushing Hall is right in this area, this is all paved back here, dumpsters and, I believe, like kitchen waste boxes or containers are back here. That'll all go away, this will all be landscaped back here. This driveway connection here will be reduced greatly, basically just for deliveries to administration, which is also in Cushing Hall. Cushing Hall will, once the dining hall is made, Cushing Hall is going to be transformed into like a student center. Students will be able to go here, off-hours, if the dining hall's closed, they'll be able to go here and get some quick meal, some snacks, play games, that's what Cushing Hall is going to be used for without a later date. So with these campus improvements, again, we're maintaining student population, we're not increasing the number of students going to the school here. They're going to increase the boarding school students, but decrease the day school students to maintain that same number. Where these improvements will help reduce the amount of truck traffic that's going along the main campus road today, through deliveries to the existing Cushing Hall dining hall now, those will all go away, be redirected to that loading access track with the south. And then another key feature to this, these improvements, that all of these buildings that we're proposing today will all be heated and cooled by geothermal heat exchange. No more fine gas or oil to heat and cool these buildings, everything's going to go geothermal. A few successful projects already on campus, the Armour Academic Building along with the existing dormitories, all in geothermal, very successful. That being said, the site plan is a very extensive stormwater management system. That being said, the site plan is a very extensive stormwater management system that we designed. Designed it in accordance to the Connecticut Deep regulations as well as the town of Simsbury town regulations. There's no net increase in stormwater runoff for the 2 to 100-year design storms. We're removing over 80% of the total suspended solids through the use of rain gardens, catch basins with deep sumps, vegetated level spreaders, subsurface infiltration systems, and drywells. All of these provide groundwater recharge for the area. And we achieve these by the use of best management practices and low-impact development design We did some soil testing out on the site. You probably know that a lot of the soil in Simsbury is very sandy material, very good for infiltration. We took two test pit locations, one for where the residential dorm will be going, another one for where the dining hall is going over here. Test one over in this area, we got about 68 inches per hour, which is what's the highest I've ever seen. And then 17 inches per hour, which is probably the second highest I've ever seen on the projects that I've worked on. The 17 is substantially lower than the 68, only because what I think happened is they hit a lot of material that was brought in when they demoed Baxter. So it's probably a lot of imported material that was placed in this area, and the test pit only went down six or eight feet. So we probably hit that type of material. This test pit location was more consistent with the types of materials that are found on Westminster campus. It's almost like a beach sand. What we did, we averaged those numbers and then divided it in half to come up with 21 inches per hour, which is what we use in our design calculations. So for the dormitory, carriage house, playground area, we have your typical pipe network system. Sorry, this is a little bit small and I thought it was going to look. What you can see here, it's tough to see, but this area right here, here and here, those are subsurface infiltrators. The roof drainage and stormwater runoff will all be directed in a pipe to those areas. They provide detention to reduce the peak flows leaving the site, as well as get as much water into back into the ground as we possibly can. If for some reason those ever do fill up, there's an emergency discharge to a level spreader right here, and then it'll just overflow down the side of the hill. Over on this area, there's an existing detention system, infiltration system, behind the existing dormitory right here. There's also currently an existing discharge out of that. That building has been constructed, that work has been done for, I believe, two or three years now, and now the drop of water has ever come out of that system. And we've had some fairly large rain events in the last couple of years. So it just proves that soils here are great for infiltration. We applied our calculation to that system there. We were able to connect roof drainage from this proposed carriage house, as well as a good amount of the area from the proposed dining hall. We were able to connect through a pipe network to that existing system. We also have these three segments here that will also act in series to pick up stormwater from the oval and then the front of the dining hall. Pipe networks will be connected, this one will fill up, over top into this one, that one will fill up, and then so on to that one. So a lot of infiltration being proposed here, a lot going back into the ground, which is what we want. This parking area in the back, we've graded this to redirect stormwater runoff off the edge of pavement here, there's a leak off into a rain garden that has three dry wells constructed in the bottom of it. So the idea is water will go into that, water quality will be treated through the use of just infiltration into the ground in that location. And then if it does fill up, it will overtop into these three dry wells and then act as detention and infiltration to the ground. You can see there's quite a bit of gray change back here, this is a 2 to 1 slope. There's a retaining wall here, and then again, generator, transformer here. Not a lot of stormwater management on this section here, mostly just reconnecting roof leaders into the existing storm drainage system. We're reducing the size of the building, but also increasing a little bit of the turbid here. All of this stormwater gets connected into an existing system over here and then goes to the north. Erosion controls, all designed to the 2002 Connecticut guidelines for soil erosion and sediment controls, as well as the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection general permit for the discharge of stormwater and dewatering wastewater from construction activities. This project will require a general permit. We'll have to produce a stormwater pollution control plan, which we will submit to the Connecticut Deep. And also included as part of the new general permit, we're going to have to do some turbidity sampling if we have a discharge from the site during construction. Basically, sampling the stormwater leaving the site during construction to make sure it's clean. These are just photos of some of the erosion control measures that we'll have on site. Construction entrance, large stow and remove dirt from the tires on the carriage of the vehicles. Erosion control matting on any slope greater than 3 to 1, or 3 to 1 or greater. Hay bales, silt fence, toe slope, and then this silt sack, which we will place in all the existing and proposed catch basins as we go through construction. We'll also, we don't anticipate getting any groundwater. It is close to 90 to 100 feet down. If for some reason there's groundwater during construction, we'll create sediment traps to reduce the sediment leaving the site. This is just a more detailed plan of the erosion control plans, silt fence, hay bales. Actually, we're just showing silt fence at the toe slope here and then here. Hay bales should be placed wherever there's a discharge, there's hay, silt fence all along the toe slope, and then the gray area is all locations where there's a erosion control So we've also submitted information to the Office of State Traffic Administration. There's a certificate for this campus. We just have to update it every time there's a project going on. There's no concerns with the amount of traffic, we're not increasing students. It's basically just going to go through administrative review to update their documents. And then there's ongoing utility coordination with Eversource, Aquaria, and WPCA. With that, I'll turn it over to Dan. He can discuss the buildings, exterior, what were your view of that?
Yeah. Landscape as well. What's going on top of this water control system? So this is sort of the landscape master plan, and again, just the screening. This is the dining hall. This is the chapel. This is Cushing, and as you can see, the renovations are at least a small part of it, about 10,000 square feet up in the center. And the two new carriage houses. You can see that the blue road is sort of the central organizer for the campus up on top of the plateau. And because we have to do the regrading areas that Ron talked about, we have a plan to, over time, bring some of that back. We want to use native Connecticut trees and shrubs. I'm not sure all of these are actually on the campus, but some of them are, and this is sort of a palette that we want to work with. It's a very natural palette. Been on the campus, you know, it's grass lawns, Kennedy trees, sort of sprays of shrubs, but not heavy foundation plant. That's very sort of naturalistic, open, very simple. We're going to keep with that theme. This is a rendering here on the right of the dining hall, and the left is Armour Hall. The reason Armour Hall is shown here is just to make a point that the materials are essentially the same materials. There's fairly uniform palette of materials that's developing in the buildings on this part of campus. So you have the treatment of gable ends, dorm roof, which I think is just pretty much of a theme up here. And then as far as the plan goes, probably 2/3 of the plan is on the main level up at the plateau level, and that's where you can basically see the main dining room, the entry lobby and servery, the kitchen. There's a smaller function, dining room, and sort of a core area here, and a balcony in the back, which we're hoping is going to have some nice views out of the balcony, obviously in the valley from that area. And as you move down, it becomes a little bit more utilitarian. This is a mechanical area. This is kitchen area, catering kitchen area. And then as you get down to the lowest level, way down the slope, you get the receiving area, and there's actually this cupboard, receiving area, with a loading dock that Ron mentioned, it's kind of tucked into almost on the tongue of the hill from the old... I guess it used to be actually the main entrance to campus, but now it's more of a service ride. And actually, that service ride has become pretty much dedicated to the serving of this and that parking lot that Ron showed. And here you can see just elevated views of that dining hall building. Sort of character that I think is in keeping with other buildings up on that plateau. And then this is a picture of one of the existing dorms, which is relevant because the new dorm is going to be exactly like it except for this mirrored image of it. So same materials, and very much in keeping with the other dorms that are populating that residential part of the campus. And you can see the plan here, a mix of the 32, 33 rooms and three faculty apartments on three levels. This is Cushing Hall. As I said, only a portion of this is being renovated. Essentially, what's happening, and it's actually easier to see on the plan, is that in this area, there's an existing kitchen that's coming off, and in its place, there's going to be a new entry porch created here. And then where the kitchen comes off, this will have to be restored, this facade, and then some new windows and so forth that are being put in on the rest. And that's mainly what shows on the outside. And it's been being put back mainly, I'd say, as the way it is now, or the same materials, the same kind of detail. And you can see it, so when you look on the elevation, you can see the three areas, basically the three phases of that more than below on the plan that get these treatments. So that's pretty much what's going on with the buildings.
What's the timeline for the three phases?
So phase one for the student residents and carriage houses, we're looking to start in the spring. The construction timeline is about 18 to 24 months for that. Either towards the end of that construction or at the end of that construction is when the dining hall's going to start. And then obviously, the Cushing Hall work can't start until the dining hall's done. So we're looking, you know, at least a four-year construction project.
You'd say 2017 though, right?
For the start of construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the dining hall. 16 for the residents. The follow-up, 17 for the dining hall. And then pushing after that.
So we've got a strong recommendation for those of the DRB me who like the ball. It's nice that you're using the same materials and the same work, very consistent.
What changes are happening to the tree lines here? Because you mentioned that now you will have a view of the Talkeet Mountains. So that means Talkeet Mountain will now have a view of you.
I wouldn't say any more than what was there when Baxter building was there. I mean, go back to that.
Because it has become more visible in the last few years, the campus.
It has. Let's go back to that aerial view. And so this was in 2008. The tree line is basically down in here.
So are you invading that tree line?
We're invading the eastern tree line. So this will maintain pretty much where it is today, and then it'll continue out, and then right about where the face of the chapel is, it'll come down. So that little bit of vegetation will come out.
So still how many feet above Hot Meadows?
Right.
Well, it's not from Hot Meadows that it's visible. Terry's playing that.
Well, they'll have a good view of these buildings because they're great-looking buildings.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's become more visible. It wasn't visible 10 years ago.
I remember driving to the campus probably about five or six years ago, it was before the dorms were built, and I pulled onto Iron Horse, and I looked out, and I could see the very, very top of Cushing. I think it was just the peaks. And that was even when Baxter was... Well, maybe it wasn't when Baxter was there, but I could just barely make out the top of that. Now that view is basically directly this way. And those trees are going to be maintained there. I think there's a few in this area to get the parking lot in, but, you know, again, this chunk will be taken out.
Right to the right of where you're...
Where you're...
Right there. Yeah, what's going on there?
That was cleared by Westminster, was it last year?
Yeah.
It was last year to open up the views, and they have some nice benches out here and create...
I think that was what opened it up.
Oh. So you're looking this way, in this direction, yes?
Well, yeah. My house, I'm thinking behind my house, near on the mountain. But I can see it from my house, I'm on the valley. Not bad, it's just disappeared. Now I have a city on the hill.
Something that you haven't seen before.
Wasn't there a water tower place anywhere?
Many years ago. Many years ago. And we recently got a donation of 70 trees, which we planted on campus. Although we take some down, we also put a lot up, trees.
Dave, just in case you want to know, Jen Renee asked if there was a name for this building, and it's still unnamed, so it's not too late.
Taking donations.
Any other questions?
See us after, okay? He's going to be great to check.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
As part of the application at some point, I want to make sure, because as you know, there are a number of things that were previously approved. Some got built, some did not get built. So I just want to make sure that we've got a sheet that shows what all has been existing, what's existing now and what's proposed, just because I know what's going to happen is the SDC or who's going to send me a letter and say, this is okay.
What's approved now, yeah.
Yeah, and so I always have to scramble. So I'd like to just make that request now. Secondly, there was some discussion when the staff met and talked about this initially on the access road, the service drive. Are you going to need to do any access, any work on that as part of this?
The majority of the existing access drive will stay. The only improvements that we are proposing at this time are the dark gray area.
Dark gray.
Yeah. So the remainder of this will stay as it is if it gets beat up.
You're talking about the main access road?
No, it's actually...
So is that where it was kind of bad before? And part of the reason they replaced that road is because it was kind of wired for trucks to go up.
It was just narrow for all of the traffic to use, yeah. It is, you know, it looks small here just because this is so wide, but this is a little over 20... a little over 20 feet wide. So it is wide enough for two lanes of traffic, it's just a lot of traffic, it's not as safe as it should. This is only going to see, you know, a few loading trucks, maybe a day, most likely a week. We're not, we're not talking about a lot of food delivery here, and that's basically what is going to be, that's all that they're going to use it for.
So it's primarily on the surface of the existing road, as opposed to, it's not being widened necessarily, or not taking a significant amount of vegetation?
None, absolutely none through here. That's the existing footprint of that road, isn't it?
Okay, those are the questions I want to ask.
So we look for a motion for approval as submitted with the proviso that the staff gets a detailed accounting of what was approved and built and what will be to be built. Your slide deck, I think, did a good job, your presentation, but we want to be sure that we crisply have that in the record so that. I might motion to approve application 1522 with provisions that Byron and the chairman mentioned. It's moved by Mr. Post, seconded by Mr. Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Great. Good work. Thank you for coming in, all right? Appreciate it.
We get ten to him. We get twice our normal pay. It's our growth intensive industry, it's private.
Move for your journey.
And this is a special meeting, so I know this is not really taking place, this is just informal. You all may remember the top school on Bush Hill, and they built that new structure there. One thing that was not in the plan was that all those HVAC units are now making motion go.
I've asked them, number one, that they weren't, they weren't there initially, and I've asked them how they were going to screen them. So they've come up with a fence, I don't know if you've seen it lately or not, and you need to just sort of get an informal idea as to whether you think that's acceptable or not, sort of to screen those things.
If they go all the way around it, would that be okay?
What's the, where's the view from on that?
Is this an existing fence or is it some post fence?
This is a, this is a fence that's there now. They put that in because they've been asking for.
But they're going to put this all the way around it?
Yes.
That's okay with me. You're the design guy though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you see it from your house on Terry's plane?
Might need a little spruce up around it.
Yeah, a little sprucing up around it, wouldn't be bad.
Again, those, those units surprised all of us because they weren't.
Yeah, I remember seeing the units, I don't remember seeing the fence.
Just an option. They want open in.
In the spring and the fall?
Yeah.
You know, that's common that we see these plans before they were figured out, the HVAC, and that always comes in as kind of a surprise to us.
You know what's happening more and more, it's really unfortunate, is they, the value engineer these things, which I think is another word, they can achieve, another term, and it's just really unfortunate because some of the stuff they do, I'm sure it works fine, but it's not really looked at through. In this case, it's big.
Well, it's because, yeah, they're moving ahead of breakneck speed and they HVAC, just like you said, they, they think about it, they thought about it, they just haven't figured it all out.
Where they're going to put it, and because we've seen several plans that this is the last thing that comes through.
Yeah, we need to start specifically asking.
There was a specific section behind this building in the back corner, surrounded by a fence that was not out facing Bush Hill, and that's not working it out. So that's what was frustrating to us. And I've been asking about it for a while, and as I say, today's the first time we got them, of course, they want open September 6th, and you're not in next meeting until September 21st, so frankly, you say what you say this time.
So when this fence is up, they really won't be seeing these units at all?
The duct that goes up the side of the whole building, Jerry?
Well, the duct is what, because I'm saying, even if you won't see anymore, but I don't remember that on the plan when they showed it.
That wasn't there.
Because I don't remember that.
I mean, what's the, I mean, I have to ask a question, what would be the alternative? If we said we didn't like that design?
Well, I could think of a number of things that you really have not, just one is they could make the, make the ductwork look like the siding on the rest of the building, you know, they could put some.
Basically box it in.
Yeah, box it in, exactly.
Or they could go in below the fence line.
That might not be a bad compromise, if we're okay with the fencing, just spruce up what's above the fence, that's almost like it's part of the building.
I think it looks terrible.
I don't like it.
I mean, you've shielded the units, but look at the ductwork.
Assuming that they can do, I'll talk to the building official, assuming they can do that without adversely affecting the HVAC units, is that something like?
Just like they do with chimneys, I know.
Yeah. You wouldn't have that exposed on the side of a house.
So there goes the value of the value.
But they did without asking anybody, so I just thought it was important to them. I want to make sure that they saw what it was before they.
There must have been something driving them to not put it on the backside. Somebody must have supposed a view though, too. They probably didn't want to look at it on the other side, so they put it on this side. The neighbor behind put his, hold his kids in school.
We looked at this, we looked at this project probably three times before they actually did come in with it, and every time it changed shape and changed size, so this is the latest iteration which actually got built. But we'll make that suggestion to them and withhold the CO until we get it.
Did you show that to designer here today?
No.
If their CO is withheld, they can't open school?
They could get a temporary CO, but they can do this, I think, you know, it shouldn't be, it should be a terrible thing, like I said, this fence appeared pretty quickly, so I would imagine they'd buy boxes, they end up probably weak.
But they can get a temporary CO, they don't need an answer.
Yeah, let's not screw up their school year.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Rob, thanks for everything you've done.
This is officially the last one, huh?
Yeah.
Wow, you're blowing us off. In all those years, you said it doesn't matter, it's on the A-balance, hey?
I'm getting upset.
That's right.
You all know that we did, you did see probably the paper on Friday where the Hartford site is.
Yeah, it's big news.
You know, I was convinced that before the end of the year that would happen, and thank goodness, you know, it got announced already. So I think the group that's purchasing it, haven't really met, I met with them once, but I'll talk with them again later this week, and I think it'll be very interesting fall and spring.
Do we know what their plans are? Are they going to just raise the place, or?
Don't know.
Don't know yet, no.
No. I have a standing joke, I'm not going to make right now, it's probably still on TV, but I, you know, I don't know, there are a lot of possibilities. My understanding is that they're very happy with the way the code worked out, they provided a number of alternatives that they're interested in. You know, some people are already convinced it's going to be a huge box, they said, you know, there's already 640,000 square feet of building there right now, it couldn't be much bigger than that. So I don't know of any proposal to put a big box there.
I actually think the last change we made will be helpful to us, because I actually am concerned that it's going to be more acre lot luxury homes, and that the last thing we changed, which was.
Yeah, we don't need that on your prime commercial property.
Yeah. Is that we made them put at least two different kinds of developments in the north.
Yeah, I think that was important too, and I know Kevin went back and forth with the gas station thing, whatever, I don't think there's any need for that now, it's across the street.
Yeah, yeah, just another gas station, wasn't that property, to the approval we gave them.
So I think, you know, to me, part of this whole process, the success of this process is going to be, look, we want to see a really nicely designed plan, and we can get it through nicely, you know, smoothly. If it comes in and it's really not at all what you expect, and I wouldn't be at all surprised if they said, you know, this isn't really what we thought, you'd like to have a public hearing, and you'd like to go over the comment, and so, you know, it just, it washes both ways of things. I think the code is good, I think, I think you'll find it very, very helpful, and hopefully it'll look great.
If they plan to buy the property in the fourth quarter, they're going to do that before they have the plans for it, so the risk will be on them.
Well, I think they're going to be spending six months doing some serious due diligence and preliminary design stuff. My sense is that they'll be in talking to whomever about, you know, do you like this? Is it in keeping with the plan, whatever? And they may even bring it in to talk to you folks, but I'm not sure. But we'll find out a little bit more about that down there this week. Still got a couple weeks, so we'll hang out for a while, so feel free to give me a call. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move your journey.
Thanks for coming out on.